Okay, and we are on the record. So we are convening the Ju- July 2nd, 2024, meeting of the Andover Charter Revision Commission. In attendance are myself, Jody Gross, Carol Lee, Jeff McGuire, Adrian Mandeville, and Karen Medor. Absent is Patricia Billing. I am at this point going to hand off moderation of the rest of the meeting to the Vice Chair Carol Lee. So Carol, you can take it away.
Thanks, Bobby. So first item is public speak. Shannon, you're our only member of the public. Do you have anything to say?
Very quickly, just two things. It would be great if the meeting minutes were posted on the town website. I tried to even find the agenda for tonight's meeting and the last one is from June 18th. And number two, like I said last time, and Bobby, I know you weren't here, welcome back. I think it would be really great if there was an ongoing document available to the public that showed that the changes that you all have already recommended and voted on, especially as we're in July now, and as far as I know, there may be a public hearing two weeks from now before you have to do your draft report. So I think it's really important to get it out as soon as possible. Thanks very much.
And the next item is the approval of last week's minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve last week's minutes.
Second.
Any comments or discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just, just one thing, Carol. I wanted in public speak, I want to sit there and, and really, what Shannon said is, we've talked about that in these meetings, to sit there and have a list of the things we've worked on, the things we voted on. And it would really, that would really be helpful and it should be posted at all times on the website to just say, hey, listen, here's, here's the Charter Commission status report. This is what we're at. We haven't dealt with these issues and we've talked about not doing these issues. So if we can all work to get that together for next week, that would be tremendous.
And the next items, now I know, Jody, when we had talked last week with the Board of Selectmen, and you said you didn't want to see any changes made to that, and that's fine, but we didn't vote on that or any discussions. So that's something that's still out there hanging. And then our last thing would just be the ordinances with Jeff. So I don't know if you want to make a motion on, because that was one of the only things that the public put forward was looking at that with the Board of Select. Looking at increasing the number or calling in the select board, not having a per selection. And I know last week you said you just wanted to leave it as it was.
That's still my position, Carol. I don't think any of those that you mentioned are worthy of my support to bring forward a motion based off of the research and quite frankly, the discussion that we've had on it informally at the committee meetings.
Right, but I'm just saying to make a motion that because we did, you did do all the work on researching it. So if you just make a motion to be exactly as it is, then this way, at least we show that we've addressed that.
I don't, I don't, you know, no, no expert with Roberts rules of parliamentary procedure, but I don't think that's how it works. I think if you want something accomplished, you, you motion for it. Otherwise, you, you know, we, I researched and I presented that research. If there was someone on the board that wanted to make or commission that wanted to make a motion based off of that, they could, but so there are, there are lots of other things, quite honestly, that we kind of, we called early just based on a lot less research, we kind of said, no. So I guess I don't feel like we should motion for something unless we want it to happen.
Okay. I just, I know those, I know what you're talking about, like with going with the town council. But we just, when Bob took the poll of everyone, that was when it was taken off the table. So that was just in silence. But if you feel that way, that's fine. Then the only thing we have to cover tonight is Jeff's ordinance.
One more thing before we leave the, the, that last issue. As I understand it, what, what Jody is saying is correct. We can vote in the affirmative to move forward. We can let it die in committee, you know, by not approving it. Or we could also affirmatively deny it. That is to say, we could all say together, okay, we reject any of the proposed changes and that's how we go on record. I'm pretty sure those are like the three options that we face at this point.
It makes sense to me, Bob. And I, you know, on this one, I'm just going to let those die on the vine. Or, or quite frankly, Carol, to your other point, maybe, maybe there's a future Charter Commission that really has the time to untangle some of those. Yeah, because those were a little thorny is what we discovered when we scratched under the surface where we're candidly, we've done some great work as this committee, right? I know we, we increased some limits on some dollars where we, you know, we voted to move the town clerk to an actual higher position. We've, you know, we've, we've tried to streamline timing for our budget as a town and RAM. You know, they're, they're, you know, we're going to tackle ordinances. These are some great things. And so we should be, I, I'm proud of the work we've done in such a short period of time.
Seconded.
All right. So we'll let Jeff go up with the ordinances.
Before we talk about ordinances, can we do just some housekeeping things, at least from my end, Carol, like timing wise, because we do have some things. So just so everybody here is, I would, I would recommend that the committee provides to the town attorney after this meeting, everything that's been approved and all the documentation we have, which is what we need to do to work together to build what Shannon has asked for, which is accurate. But we should get everything to the town attorney for this week, Bob, and allow him to come back to us next week with a rough draft for us to review at our next meeting, which would be July 9th. Correct?
Correct. And then we can have a public hearing on the 16th, which would put us in the timeline for the 22nd, having everything to the Board of Select.
All right. So I'm just asking that everybody on this meeting understands that that should be the timeline that we follow to get to the public hearing, because we have to, Carol, and you know this better than I do, and I'm just assuming there's probably a notice on that public hearing that we have to get out in front of. And how long is that notice requirement?
Five days people. So what we could do is after we're done making the decision on the proposed ordinances, changes in the ordinances that you're going to present tonight, we could set the date for the public hearing on the 16th, which would be great. Then we actually have the date and I can get everything over to Dennis tomorrow because I've already typed everything up that you proposed last week. So unless there's any changes with what you emailed over, that document is set to go over to you.
Perfect. So after this meeting, then after we decide what we're doing with the ordinance, whether we approve it or not, like, so if we approve it, whatever changes are made, if you could send that over to everybody, what you've already done, Carol, is send it over and then we can all read that. And then, you know, even by email, if we just say, okay, we're good with this, send that to Dennis. Dennis then gets it back to us before our next meeting. We review it before our next meeting. Vote to, to vote in the affirmative that we're all good with all of what it's written. And then we sit there and, and the public hearing is already scheduled. And Bob, that's just me thinking, you know, I was going through the timeline in my head earlier today. I'm like, it kind of lines up. We get everything done today. Decide if we're good next week, we review, following week, we have the public hearing. Then it's to the Board of Selectmen for the 22nd, which was the, the date that we had selected. Now, listen, we have a Board of Selectmen meeting next week. And if everybody on this meeting believes we should push it off a little bit, we can ask for a little delay on that. But I personally would rather just hit the timelines and be moving on. So.
I think it's just contingent on Dennis being able to get it done over the holiday weekend.
Got it. Yep. No problem. Okay. I had sent an email to everyone at our previously regarding ordinance sections. And this, this, what I had done was based upon our conversations, we were having some discussions regarding the timing of implementation. And so if I'm not sure if anybody has any specific issues related to any of the terminology or the timelines, but I'll sit there and give you the, the important stuff as I see it. So there was, there would be an action by the Board of Selectmen to put forth an, an ordinance. That ordinance would then be, be put forth to the town and to the residents. And then there could be a petition that would be filed to the town clerk within 50 days, or 20 days, excuse me. And the, the issue would be 5% of, of which again, I like numbers, 5% of the electorate or 50 electors. So basically it's, it's 50 signatures and addresses of registered voters could take any ordinance and would push that ordinance out. No ordinance would ever go into effect for 45 days. So what that would allow to happen is two Board of Selectmen meetings would be would be in place before it, it is before an ordinance would go into place. So anyone from the community who did not like that could sit there and come to the Board of Selectmen and sit there and at least have a second meeting to be able to voice their displeasure and allow the Board of Selectmen to change anything that they've already done. And then if you actually get 50 signatures, what we talked about to make everything as easy as possible, the ordinance would be held until the next November election. And then the, the ordinance would be voted on by the town. So any 50 residents who don't like an ordinance could sit there and file a petition. That petition would then move the ordinance, once approved by Carol, would go back to the Board of Selectmen, would move that ordinance to the next general election for a referendum. And then the rest of the town would be able to vote on it in either in the positive or the negative to allow it to go, to allow it to go into effect. So worst case scenario, the Board of Selectmen takes a swing at an ordinance at their December meeting and a group of residents or voters don't like that ordinance, they would get 50 signatures and then that ordinance would be held in abeyance until the November election, when it would be voted on by the town. So we're not, we're not doing any special meetings. We're not calling and getting people to have to come. We're just holding all of that off. And I think what I did was incorporate everything that everybody had talked about in the last meeting when we discussed this. So it was 45 days for implementation. The petition could sit there and be placed out there. 50 voters or 50 electors is the round number to sit there and put forth a petition and I think I, I went through and, and gave a sections of this that really met all of the criteria that we had discussed when we did this probably two or three weeks ago. Anybody have any questions about anything specific that was written or anybody want to change anything? Because this is not about, I mean, if somebody wants something changed, we can put it in here because it's just a way to make us more efficient. It has nothing to do with you know, concerns that the Board of Selectmen and power and any of that stuff. It's just, if we want to pass an ordinance to deal with pet waste at the field or on any public facility, we shouldn't have to call a special town meeting to enact that.
I have a question about the mechanics and the timing. I just want to make sure that I understand this correctly. So the Board of Selectmen passes an ordinance. Is there, once, once that ordinance has been passed, is there a certain time period, a certain window within which the public, if they have objections, has to act with a petition? And that's, that's 45 days?
That was 20 days.
20 days. Okay. So if the public does not act within the 20 days of the passing, that's it. The ordinance is good and it's not going to be challenged again? Or can they bring up a petition at any point in the future to challenge that ordinance?
Well, I'd ask that question honestly, and I had thought about that. Can they challenge at any point in time? The issue of the 45 days to me gives the community, if somebody misses that deadline, they could come to this next meeting of the Board of Selectmen because if I, if I'm correct, and I, and I believe it, the Board of Selectmen at any point in time can enact or should be able to enact or retract an ordinance. Right? Now, the community would have the same issues if, if an ordinance was retracted that 50 people in the community don't want to be taken off the books. Then they could file a petition as well to sit there and go in the opposite direction, Bob. So it would, it goes both ways, but that's why I believe the 45 days is really good because what you're doing is before it is enacted, the Board of Selectmen has to have a second meeting to show up and take comments from the public about it. And they might sit there and some members of the Board of Selectmen might sit there and go, you know, maybe we didn't think this through correctly. And they can, they can retract the ordinance. So the issue ends up being there, there, there is something that I, I was looking at as far as 20 days or 30 days or 45 days to file the petition. And I believe there's some, there's some issues related to the number of days that you, you can have. Now, it's usually about implementation. And I believe, Carol, I believe in the last section, when we did the town meeting, it was immediately after the town meeting that the ordinance went to effect. I, I do believe that that's.
You have to publish the ordinance or a portion of it in the paper. And then it becomes effective 21 days after publication.
Right. So that's even for us, even the 45 days is still going to extend out to 66 days. Because we're still going to have to publish it. Or, or we publish it in the beginning.
Right, but the 21 days, the way that the charter is written, that those 20 days for someone to petition if they don't agree, that's the 21 days that it published the ordinance. So I only concerned with that is this stuff is really, it's broad and sweeping. It gives the Board of Selectmen a lot of power. And if people aren't following Board Selectmen meeting, like with currently with the town meeting, we have to send a notice to everyone. You know, whether it's 45 people or 25 people go out. Everyone is notified.
Let's put that in here that we send a notice to everybody. I mean, this is not, this is, I, I have no problem. Like if Carol, if you sit there and say, we should notice the community that there's an ordinance being considered, let's send it out.
I mean, the only thing I'm saying, section 304 is to says that you can approve, repeal, or modify any prior ordinance. Then section 402B, you can enact, you can create, modify, and abolish agents. So even those agencies identified by charter.
But that, but that's already in there.
That you can.
Oh, no, 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 you're right. You're right. But that wording was in there. That's what I was saying. But
Right. I'm just saying, I'm reading your wording. So.
No, 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 you're not, you're not wrong. You're not wrong. It was, I was crossing out the town meeting, creation, consolidation, modification, or abolishing.
I mean, I've read a lot of other towns' charters and that, and they do put things, I understand the pet waste has been a big thing up at the field, but there are other towns that have put in there with a description of minor ordinances. They give examples of those minor ordinances. So one of the towns said to maintain public health and safety, zoning, behavior, and general welfare. And then they give examples are noise, snow removal, pet restrictions, building and zoning rates. I mean, there is a way to greater define the ordinance. Cause that's, that's all I'm concerned with because a lot of people don't, they don't follow the Board of Select. You know, and then the 20 days could pass. I hear what you're saying that, you know, maybe they could come to another Board of Selectmen meeting, bring it up and ask for it to be reviewed or petitioned.
So Carol, Jeff had said that he was amenable to adding a notification. Would that suffice to what you're, you're concerned about? You said that they don't follow. Would that, would that be more comfortable for you?
So you're, you're saying to mail out the notice like we do, that you're having a public hearing on the ordinance. But again, I mean, the people wouldn't have the right to vote at that public hearing. It would still.
At least we've taken a positive step towards actively notifying them rather than them requiring, you know, passively following. So.
Every month, the Board of Select meeting. Okay. I, I do see that. So.
And, and Carol, just to make it even clearer, it's 21 days from the time that the notice is received. Don't even make it 21 days from, let's not make it 21 days from the time that the Board of Selectmen votes go. The Board of Selectmen votes on an ordinance. The ordinance information is sent out to the, the community in total, in total. Everybody gets it. We mail it to everybody. So that's our cost is that mailing. Right? And we mail it to everyone and they get to read it. And in the notice is, is information as to the timing that they have to sit there and question it. They don't have to come to a town meeting. They don't have to do anything. They'd have to put their, their name on a signature form that sits there and says, hey, I don't agree with this ordinance. And listen, I don't think, I mean, I only speak for myself. There's no reason in my mind to create any drama or any issues about passing an ordinance that's going to cause me or the Board of Selectmen any undue. I don't, I don't think any of us need it. And I don't think any of us want it. And so I, Carol, I, I would sit there and say, if that is important, I'm all for it. Let's do it.
All right. So send a mailer out before the Board of Select meeting.
No, the Board of, the Board of Selectmen votes. So the, the way that I think it would work, Board of Selectmen, Board of Selectmen votes to has, you know, and this would probably have to take multiple means. Board of Selectmen would go through, say, they're thinking about doing an ordinance. They bring the language forward. They would vote to approve the language. Once the language is approved by the Board of Selectmen, a notice would be sent within the next seven days out to the public. And then the day that the public receives it, and, and what we do is we say, we send one to the town clerk's office. And the day you receive it is the day you check it in off of the mail. And then you sit there and say that the community has 21 days or 20 days to, to put, to put a petition forth to, to move that to referendum. Because that's what this whole thing is doing. It's not, it's not a negative or positive. If, if the community thinks that we've overstepped our bounds, they then put forth a petition to move it to referendum to have everyone in the town vote on it at the next general election.
Does that work for you, Carol?
Well, and that's the only other thing too, because sometimes the general election, if they're petitioning in December, we're going to have them hold off for 11 months. We wouldn't have a special referendum?
No, the whole point is not to spend any more money than is absolutely necessary, not to do things in special format. So my whole goal was to try to move everything to November into an election time. So the community would have to vote on it if there was a problem. And Carol, the, the, in my head, a, a board would want to sit there and pick a timeline like July to sit there and potentially pass ordinances.
But realistically, Jeff, what you're saying is, what we're saying here is that the Board of Selectmen would put forward language at a meeting, they'd vote on it. And you know, the public would have what, we would have a mailer go out within seven days. Am I hearing this correctly? So mailer goes out within seven days from reception at, you know, and they'd have, is it 45 days? Is that correct, Jeff?
20, 20 some odd days to file the petition, 45 days for the, the ordinance to be enacted.
Okay. So there's seven days to notice and then 21 days to, to get a petition together.
Correct.
And we have the 21, have the 21 days be effective from the reception of the, of the notice by the, by the clerk?
Yep. So it's 20, it was 20 days, 21 days from receipt of town mailer by town clerk's office.
Yep.
And then Carol, you.
And then play out, play, play out what 50 people showed up within that 20 days. Have, have I showed up with a petition with 50 signatures in 18 days? Carol, and she said, yep, that's good. What happens?
Then the implementation of the ordinance would not move forward. It would go to referendum at the next general election in November.
Got it. Thank you.
And just to, to do a little bit more what if, because somebody brought this up. Say the, the ordinance is passed in December, the public comes up with the requisite 50 signatures, a stay is put on it. If the Board of Selectmen felt strongly enough about it and they got enough coherent feedback from the public, they presumably could withdraw the ordinance as it had been passed, redraft it and try to repass it in such a way so that it doesn't have to wait until next November to be, to be voted on.
That's, that, that is accurate, Bob. And a smart, efficient way to go at it. If the wording is wrong, you change the wording and you listen to the community members who sat there and opposed the ordinance and rewrite it. Move it forth, move it forth again. And if they do the same thing again, then you, you as a board, a Board of Selectmen would sit there and determine whether they want to rewrite it again, or whether they want to sit there and just go to referendum. But again, it's a referendum in a normal election cycle. We're not asking for anything special. We're not asking for money to be spent. And we're just moving on.
Just for clarification, could that, you said, we're saying normal election cycle. Instead of having the board have to wait the whole year, could they theoretically put it on the, put it on a, a budget referendum?
That's what I was just going to say. I, I know we can't discuss anything other than the budget at the budget. But I don't think that there's any problem putting questions on the budget.
I have no problem with that because most people, well, like Carol, how many people came and voted for the budget referendum? How many, how many votes did we get?
We had 200 to 300.
200 to 300.
Well, but hopefully those numbers will go up when they're together as well, you know?
Right.
I, I have no problem changing that. So it would be, so as opposed to having language in that it would be a November election, it would be any regularly scheduled referendum?
I, I like that idea.
Where did I put that? One second, I gotta look at something.
I'm looking at your hat, Jeff. Is that a Boston hat or a Celtics hat? I'm kind of confused.
It's a, it's a, it's a Celtic hat. It's a Red Sox Celtic hat. It's Boston. I don't know.
I don't know the team well enough. I'm sorry.
No, I don't either. It's green. I don't know if it's a Red Sox. I don't know if it's a Red Sox um St. Patrick's Day hat or.
If I'd have known, I would have worn my Whalers hat.
I'm with you, Bob. I'm a Whaler fan. So I named my my wife named our dog after a Hartford Whaler. So in the section um um it was item two in section three, three oh one A. Uh, we would change the first Tuesday after the first Monday in the month of November to uh the first regularly scheduled townwide referendum. And I we, and Carol, the only thing we need to do is um we need to determine if we can actually put questions on the ballot during the budget referendum. Do you think that's okay? Have you ever done that before?
Well, I mean, you have our two non-binding advisory questions. Yeah. You know, Ram has put questions on there too, so.
Okay, I I honestly, I like that because what it does is it gives you two opportunities for an ordinance. It gives you a May and and it's split down the middle. It's May and November. It's probably six months.
If you have something more pressing this way, you know?
Right. And and referendums are used, are home rules. Whatever the town attorney is.
Okay, I like, I like that because then you know, it gives you a six-month window between potential elections that we we have to, we are committed as a town to hold. We're gonna be committed to hold the budget referendum and then we're gonna be committed to hold um a a referendum or a a vote in November. So there's nothing extra special being done. We're not, we're not requiring special meetings. We're not requiring a special round of referendum to be held. It's it's a normal uh reg- next regularly scheduled referendum. You know, in May, and we, maybe we even label it in in May or November. And we we leave it like that. Okay, I'll I'll get that done. Is there anything else that anyone wants to change or modify or talk about? Okay, so just so I'm I'm clear, um we're gonna say in section um we're gonna sec- say in section three oh one.
Three oh one two, right? Because it, the last line it says um special referendum which we conducted simultaneously with the election regularly scheduled to be held on the first Tuesday after the first Monday in the month of November or the next scheduled referendum.
Um, well.
Three one, the wording different.
I would just go next scheduled, regularly scheduled referendum.
Um, should we, do we want to call it a referendum or an election?
It would be a referendum.
Next, the next regular, regular, regularly, regularly scheduled townwide vote in either May or November. Does that make sense?
Specific enough.
So we would, we so see, but it's not in uh, it's not in cooperation. I I I will, there's 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 some wording that needs to be changed, but is is the, is the thought, is that, is that terminology that I use? So what I, what we would do, so that last, that last um sentence, Carol, will come out and it will say, uh, you know, because I don't think the the budget vote is enough. Is is the budget vote uh an Office of the Secretary of State kind of thing, Carol? It's not, is it?
Sorry, I was muted. No, that's home.
Okay, so so that wording has to be changed and I'm not sure what it needs to be changed to, but what we're gonna get to is if, if, if the town clerk receives this, and we got a whole other section I gotta deal with, but if the town clerk receives a a petition and fifty signatures are gathered, it's gonna go and it's going, we're gonna push it to referendum that will will coincide. The the referendum will be conducted at the next regularly scheduled townwide vote in either May or November. Is that the logic? Just so everybody is on the same page, right?
You can probably entirely strike the language of in cooperation with the Office of the Secretary of the State and state law. It seems to be uh of of course, it would be, you know, within the framework of state law and local. Uh I I don't know that we have to include that language for this to be.
Okay, so I'll get rid of that.
I I think that we do have to, especially if it's going to be a November election because they have to approve anything that's going on a state or federal ballot. So that wording should, we could let Dennis tweak whatever has to be tweaked. Maybe just put it out to him, leave it as it is and just add for the next regularly scheduled referendum or um because that's the only other thing. It's gonna be regularly scheduled. We're not gonna, we're gonna either have a November election or a regularly scheduled referendum.
Okay, so if we sit there and say, if the petition contains sufficient valid signatures and is otherwise legally sufficient, the effective date of the ordinance shall be set aside and the selectmen shall schedule a special referendum to be conducted simultaneously. And there's all the state language that may or may not need to be in there simultaneously with the next regularly scheduled townwide vote in either May or November.
And you're gonna send that over?
I'm gonna send it back to everybody.
Okay.
You know, you could actually make this more verbose, but include everything. Basically say uh the effective date of the ordinance shall be set aside, the selectmen shall schedule a special re- referendum to be conducted simultaneously with the next townwide vote regularly scheduled in May, comma, or in cooperation with the Office of the Secretary of State, blah, 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 all the existing language. So you could state both of those things explicitly.
And I, and and uh um I'm going to definitely let the town attorney deal with that language that has to go in there for the Secretary of State and he'll deal with that. But the the concept of next townwide vote regularly scheduled in either May or November is.
That's the concept we're all agreeing on.
Okay, and we'll vote on it after this. And then the ne- the next part of this was um we have to change um a petition must be, uh, let's see. So I have to figure out where to put the whole issue of um twenty days. So we, you know, we need to, we need to put into this a mailer. So in the general, the Board of Selectmen, um. That's subject to repeal. Let's go to four oh six. I have to figure out where to put the issue that Carol raised about um well, Mr. Carol didn't raise it, but we were talking about mailers. So we want to specifically state, we're gonna send a mailer out. And the twenty-day time limit for repeal um or for an ordinance petition to be filed doesn't start until that. A to petition must be filed with the Office of the Town Clerk within twenty di- twenty days after and then I'll put in here after receipt of townwide mailer received by the town. So a petition must be filed with the Office of the Town Clerk within twenty days after receipt of townwide mailer um by and I'm sure that's gonna get changed to the Office of the Town Clerk by the Office of uh Town Clerk. And so, and we may need to somewhere put that the Board of Selectmen is required to um prepare a mailer and send it out. And then so what we're doing is changing the timeline of the petition. So a petition must be filed with the Office of the Town Clerk within twenty days after receipt of townwide mailer by the Office of the Town Clerk with final action taken by um so we're gonna get rid of that. Um so that's gonna be, that's gonna be, we're gonna take out that final action taken by the Board of Selectmen. I'm gonna say petition must be filed by the Office of the Town Clerk within twenty days after receipt of townwide mailer by the Office of the Town Clerk uh by five percent or fifty, which it's gonna end up being fifty for our entire existence. Fifty of the electors of the town, whichever number is less as determined by the last registry list of the register of voters. Okay? And the petition must confirm with general statutes. And Carol, what I would like to do to make this as easy as possible for any petitioning group is is, I know I've seen your petitions in the past. Right? The petitions just meet your criteria and the criteria of the state of Connecticut. Everybody should have access to any petition they want. And um I'm assuming, Carol, that like when people do petitions in the past, they there's a s- normal form and people would just go out and get two signatures on one page and five signatures on another page, and then you just add them all up and if it totaled fifty, it would be moved to referendum. Right?
Correct. So everyone who's going to circulate a petition has to take a forenote that they are obtaining the signal. And they either know the person or they're verifying who they are when they're signed.
Okay, so in in one thing we should do is um we should have um a standard um notice form and all of the instructions, the basic instructions as to how to file a petition should be on that notice that's required to be sent by the Board of Select. So the Board of Selectmen would print the ordinance and then the bottom part of the 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 information would be the instructions as to how to file a petition. So that we get the information to the residents as to, okay, hey, listen, here's the ordinance, here are the rules. If you don't like the ordinance, you can, you can create a petition and you need to go to the town clerk's office and here's step one, step two, step three, step four.
Yeah, and some, something basic like, say, a printed name, a signature. We should have a uh basically a an example petition page that shows a signature, a printed name, and what we're looking for for, you know, if, uh, whether it's how they're registered or some way that that shows that they've verified who they are. Every, at the top of every page that has signatures on it, you have to have printed what they're signing. They can't have like a front page and then signature pages after it. Every page has to have what they're signing on it, you know?
Yeah, and and that, and I'm assuming, Adrian, that would be something that would be, you know, we would direct them to the town clerk's office and then the town clerk would sit there and have, you know, they have to take, they would have a necessary documentation as to what to do.
Right.
I I I think it's important to sit there and let people know, hey, listen, um, this, this, this petition, you know, can, you know, it can be overturned and this is how you have to do it. You go to the town clerk's office and X, Y, and Z. And then the town clerk walks you through it. And hopefully, we don't have people going to do this. And hopefully, any refer, any ordinance passed by the Board of Selectmen would be real reasonable and, you know, not outlandish and.
As with everything in town, we hope for the best and plan for the worst.
There you go. So is there anything else that anyone would like to change? Because I'm I'm going to email this back to everybody. You know, and then on to, you know, if it, if it gets approved on to the.
So so we're gonna vote on this on our next, at our next meeting then?
No, I wanna put on this now so that it can go to the town attorney and he can, because you're voting on this now. I mean, now, listen, everything that we're voting on, we're voting on now. And I'm assuming we have to vote on the total language on everything next week.
Yes, so that's why, I guess what I was saying. So you're gonna, you're gonna modify this language. It'll go into that document that we got sent earlier by Carol and we'll vote on the totality of that document next week.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
So I'm looking for, does anyone want, you know, the timeline to change? Does anyone want the number of voters to change? Does?
I think, I think we've been very fair across the board with all of our ideas here, so. Carol, you agree?
Karen, do, I mean, anybody, Bob, Jody, does anybody want to make any adjustments to this before we vote?
Jody's reeling in a tuna. Give me a minute.
Yeah, I'm on board. Silence is uh acceptance, in my opinion.
Karen, you did a great job, Jeff.
And any, any, any other changes, Karen? I mean, like, because listen, if there's anything, I'm I'm, I don't want this to be appear in any way to be anything other than what it is, is to be more.
I'm on board, everything.
Okay. All right, then, listen, I'll make a motion uh to uh pass the information related to ordinances on to the town attorney as written with the changes to um a town notice and to also um uh the town notice being received by the mailer and changing the language for next regularly scheduled uh townwide vote. And I've emailed that to everybody as we were talking.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Thank you, Bob. I was taking notes quickly.
Ends over the meeting and then he runs it from the backseat.
Well, no, I see, I see Carol's busy, so. Okay, you wanna call the vote, Carol?
You can go ahead, Bob. You're doing a great job.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? So it carries six, zero, one since missing one since Patty's not here. Okay, great job. Thanks, Jeff.
And our last agenda item is public speech.
Um, be- before we go to public speech.
Sorry.
Do we have to do anything or we're all, we're all okay with the timeline? Like, we don't need to vote. We're just all in agreement that this language that we voted on for everything else. And 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 before we go, do we have anything else we need to consider?
We wanna set the date for the public hearing, right, for the sixteen?
We do, but does anyone here in 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 attendance want to address any other issues? And we're all, if we're all good, we're all good. I I'm I'm all good. I don't need to address anything else. I just think it should be brought up.
So we all sit with a dog ordinance, you know, down at the field and everything?
That would end up having to get to the Board of Selectmen and yes, I hope we are. Okay, all right, um, then, yeah, let's just set up public hearing data. So I'll make a motion that we uh schedule um uh a public hearing for the uh the draft of the Charter Revision Commission to be held on uh July sixteenth.
And this will be in person?
Yes, it would have to be.
Seconded.
Uh, okay, so I gotta modify, I gotta modify the motion uh to be held at the community room?
Yes.
Okay.
And Adrian seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 So now we have public speech. Anon?
Two quick things. Um, thing number one is, Carol, I think you said, if if you're going to have a public hearing on the sixteenth, and I know you're not supposed to answer me, but does a notice get sent to all of the town that the public hearing will be occurring on the sixteenth?
Uh, I don't know that that's required um for us to do that.
Can we, can we send, can we send a notification out through the um The text system and the email system that we have in place that communicates to the town about road closures or anything else? Uh, Shannon, we will, we will do that.
Great, I just, I think it's important enough to know.
No, 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 not not to send a mailer, Carol, to send a notification out to the community through this email and text alert system.
And great job on legislating, Jeff. My only thought um is this, just for your consideration. Um, if you're talking about truly becoming more efficient and more streamlined and whatnot. Whether or not, except in the case of an emergency, it would be best for the Board of Selectmen to basically have. One, two, three meetings where it's kind of understood that you would be considering and passing ordinances. And then you're not, so for example, just to take it out to its worst possible scenario, Board of Selectmen enacts an ordinance in December. Public notice goes out, passed to the mailer, then you get petitioning members. And they say, nope, we really don't like this, so you gotta reconsider it. Great. Three months later, same thing happens and and ongoing, whether or not it might be better for everybody's purpose to have. Special Board of Selectmen meetings where if you're kind of becoming the legislative body of the town. Um, you actually put forth ordinances that then are voted on by the town in May and November. Just a thought.
Hmm.
Thanks, thanks for all of your work and we'll see if I can make it. Uh, definitely be there the sixteenth. Next week might be the yard goats. Bye.
Okay.
Um, just a comment that I want to enter as a member of the public rather than as a member of the commission. Um, not specifically charter related, but when we talk about sending out notifications to the town, I think about all of the. Bills that I get and the statements that I get, you know, from from banks and financial institutions and things like that. Where I've opted out of receiving paper stuff through the mail and have opted into electronic notification moving forward. Maybe the town can do something like that so that we can drop into a lower bulk rate for the stuff that we still have to send out by paper. You know, if a substantial enough fraction of the town opts to receive electronic communications, maybe we can save some money.
I'll tell you when I get my paper taxes, because I still haven't gotten those yet. You're laughing, I'm serious. I I had to go online to look and, you know, to see what I supposedly owe, so.
Oh, I got mine from the town yesterday.
I'm still waiting.
It might be sending you a few extra ones, Adrian. That's okay.
Yeah.
Either that or maybe you don't have any.
Yeah, they think, I think they want my twenty grand, I'm sure, so.
Okay, um, if there's nothing else, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Second.
Hi.
Okay.
Babe.
Jody, good luck fishing.
Thanks, man. Great work, everyone. We'll see you next week.
All right, good night, everyone.
Night.